A lot of time and and they were talking about it from the watershed perspective, but also the roads, because in Washington. It was a really interesting discussion.
Yeah.
Because at first I wouldn't shut it right off because I thought it was gonna go political and it didn't go political at all. It was like the reality is of of where we are now with the heavy rains.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's you know, that's one of the reasons why um the federal government and most of the states um push to have like culprits um upgrade upsized.
Yep.
Because they they knew that we're going into that phase that it's gonna be heavy rains.
Well, they used to say the hundred the ten year storm and now they're at a hundred year storm.
Well, they yeah, they've always had uh ten, twenty five, fifty and a hundred.
Yeah, five o'clock, calls meeting order, everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is Sam's, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Um on tonight's agenda, we have some roundtable discussion uh surrounding nominees for our patriotic committee. Uh we review some policies that were submitted on two twenty twenty four. And just a reminder that uh candidate's night is this evening at Messina. Uh not that that won't go out before the meeting happens, but um hope to see everybody down there. Alright, with that, we'll go right into the nominees for our patriotic purposes committee. Um right now, they have before us Tammy Hanu, Travis Somro, is that Cole or?
Kale.
Kale, Sikla, Sean Bader, Mandy Bader and Peter Somro. You've had a couple of meetings with these people, Jason?
Yeah, well, we had one um just to kick things off, just I was there, Ollie was just talking to them. Second meeting, Ollie um and Carl Toco were there. So that was as close to a quorum as we could get.
Alright.
Memorial Day committee and they both said, yes, we would like these people on. Uh can I see that list? I just wanted to make sure it is, yep. Hmm.
Yeah, it stapled what you wrote down.
Oh, was it?
Yeah, it's right behind it.
Hmm, yeah, I have that. Yeah, I think that's that is the list.
Alright, if there's more, we'll gladly add to it. That's good, uh it's great to see some people wanna join up.
Yeah, there was there was a lot of enthusiasm with all of them people.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um as well as with Ollie and Kurt who are refreshed.
Oh, yeah.
To see maybe even a little overwhelmed with
Oh wow.
the enthusiasm that was shown.
Good. Yeah, I talked to um Sean Bader called me yesterday.
Hmm.
Had a long conversation with him about different aspects of it and what they can and can't do and um so there's a couple of things I'm gonna look into for him, but yeah, he's very
Oh, good.
gung ho.
Yeah, right at the outset.
I told him I'd love to hear the enthusiasm, that's awesome.
It is, and right at the outset, I told them I'm just a facilitator between Ollie and them and
Yeah.
and I I was part of their group text at first, just put a schedule in the meeting, but I told them, you guys have this thing.
Yeah.
And as soon as they're appointed officially, uh then just told them they got down, get sworn in. And I think they're gonna have another meeting as official members and uh delegate the work.
Great. Awesome, love it.
Wow, that's great.
And form of the committee.
Can I go that back, Lou?
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yes.
And I told them, reach out to any one of us, Debbie, if they have any questions, we're always always available.
Yeah. Excellent. Do you have any questions, comments, concerns, Lou, with any of the?
Not at all.
Candidates? Alright, anybody in the room? Hearing none, uh make a motion, actually, how long is the term? Did you go over that with them? How long they're willing to make the commitment? Uh maybe just one year?
There wasn't. I don't know. Do you wanna put a term on it?
Yeah. Well, to be determined. We'll go with that.
Three years is a normal term.
Yeah, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And they are appointed, um so.
Yeah.
It's something that. Yeah, if they stuck it out three years, that'd be great, and I think our policy that we're about to review says if they wanna stay on, they stay on unless they're asked not to, right?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Alright.
I don't know. It wasn't discussed.
So so we could put it for one, if they wanna stay, they can stay, right?
We can do it that way.
Alright, perfect. Alright, uh make a motion to appoint Tammy Hanu, Travis Somro, Kale Sikla, Sean Bader, Mandy Bader and Peter Somro to the patriotic purposes committee uh for a term length initially of one year um effective today. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Tom, favorite?
Aye.
Aye.
Even though that form wasn't officially approved yet, but I figured.
Some information gathering too, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
See how it works.
Mm-hmm.
I'll start with Jason, please.
So I need to get like email addresses for all of them and.
I don't know, can we do that with?
Yep.
All. Are you saying town email addresses?
No, I need.
Oh, just to collect their and their contact information, yeah, that could be done.
Yeah. Yeah. That'll that that's actually the spot on the oath as well, so it'll put a phone number and a email address.
Yeah.
Yay.
Alright, does that go on this one?
Yep, thank you.
Cool, alright, so homework from last week. The uh polys- uh presented policies and procedures uh that Debbie gave us last week. We start off with the application for appointment to the board or committee or commission, the form that we had just signed.
Mm-hmm.
Um mainly note um was if we could just list the different boards and committees um that require the select board vote for appointment.
Okay.
Um but I don't know if we need to necessarily, uh to.
Maybe even on a different a different form.
Hmm.
Or somewhere. You're saying for future select.
Just to list it out, yeah.
Boards.
And then kind of is a running uh document of the different boards and committees that we have to.
Okay.
Yeah, CBA requires appointments for um the board selectmen.
Yeah. Hmm.
Heritage Commission. Does that require?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Okay. Um.
If it's not elected, it's appointed by the selectman.
Fire department. Supposed to be a fire department, right? Fire chief at least.
Yeah.
Yep.
Police chief.
Hmm. Well, that's not for that, but.
Yeah, that's for for boards and committees.
Oh, these are for boards, committees and commissions, if they're served that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. So.
I didn't really have any changes until we s- you know, start working through it, if you know, it seems cumbersome or something needs to be changed, then we can tweak it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then do we have a recommended by?
The recommend.
The recommended by, do we?
Yep.
Do we um?
So that would be the the chair of whatever
Yeah.
board or commission committee and then um in the vote of the, you know, so if they so recommended by the ZBA, say.
Yeah, and in this case it would be.
And what the vote was, yeah.
Yeah, Ollie or Carl.
Yeah, so that was like two to zero.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna say recommended by Memorial Day Committee, cause that's what it was used to be called.
Yeah.
And then put that Ollie and Carl.
Two to zero.
Hmm.
Okay. Cool.
Yeah, I don't have any any issues and I wouldn't wouldn't bother me if instead of um where would you put it?
Put what?
What you wanted to have a list.
Oh, here.
Of the different.
Instead of having a line for whatever board they're assigning, just have all the things and you just circle it?
Circle it, yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, and then you have a
Should have a box next to it.
And then you have another spot too.
I'm gonna have to make the font smaller.
So that's also the conservation.
Hmm, yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I guess it's kind of um or I found this is another towns thing that I think they had that, so it's like stuck in my head.
Possibly, yeah. Yeah.
And then there's the um FAC and sort of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, sounds like we agree with the.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Work that in there.
No, it's not what the long pair have.
Yeah, make a really small print.
Oh. I'm I'm gonna have to make it, I'm gonna have to make the whole font smaller in order to stick a bunch of
We need to get rid of this line, right?
things in it. Yeah, but it's gonna have.
And list, have a list of.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright.
That was an easy one.
So once you make those changes, just email it to us? Like we don't need any official vote for this, I don't think.
Yep.
Just the.
Yeah, cause it's not an ordinance, it's not something you sign in, it's just a procedure.
No.
And then once it's, once I do that, I'll email it to you guys, just let me know, yes, looks good, whatever, or change something.
Yeah.
And then I'll email it to all the department heads and all the board chairs right now and the admins for those boards. So they have that and this is how it's going from now on.
Good.
Paper trail.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next up, background check policy. Oh, it seems.
We pretty much discussed that last time.
Yeah, reasonable and.
Yeah.
And exactly the like the flow that we had spoken about before, you know, regarding background checks when they come back. You know, after your initial review, if there's anything questionable, then it'd be run by the select board, so.
Which is what I've been doing.
And yeah, we also discussed um some things were
Yeah.
some positions were being background checked now, but there really wasn't um was there really a need for it? Like the person doing the uh the food service over at the Parks and Recreation.
Well, that was in regards to the baseball league, yeah, it's gonna do their own, yeah, on those people, but yeah.
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 Yeah. But that could fall into rec department as well.
If it's for rec, yeah, if it's for a rec function.
If they wanted to, you know, the Mindy or, you know, us would have to to push that, but you know, anybody volunteering the snack shack is usually a parent, we don't have too many one offs, you know, people that aren't associated with something coming down to serve food.
Okay. A random person.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that one there would actually probably be more addressed in the volunteer policy.
Hmm.
Yeah.
But I do in the background.
So you're both comfortable with this?
Kinda, take a look, I didn't pull that one up.
Alright.
Hmm. Did anybody else have problems going getting the the documents out of the Dropbox?
I haven't gone into the Dropbox, I think I got them from an email or, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, this last one, I couldn't get anything out of the window.
Dropbox is driving me crazy, the stuff that I thought was in there for planning board like disappears and then different stuff shows up and I don't, yeah.
Oh.
This is where it's got two links going.
Although.
Oh, maybe.
It would apply to this, what you brought up.
What?
Are there positions in town that would not require a background check? Volunteer positions, if there are, then it has to be addressed here, excluding what?
Well, couldn't that just be with like inner in each department if they're.
No, not here, it says all prospective employees and volunteers of the town are required to have a background check
Right, yeah.
as a condition of their employment or volunteer service. So.
Yes.
It was what I did on the volunteer because Tina's on, you know, in charge of recruiting volunteers. I had her go through this to see what her thoughts were.
Hmm.
That was the first one was the background checks will be performed for all volunteers. And the objection is not that someone wants to hire a criminal.
Hmm.
The objection is, number one, it's intrusive on a person, they have to fill out their social security number, all that information and then have it be scanned or not scanned, but reviewed by one or more people and so for someone like at the Green Center, they're down there sorting books.
Yeah.
Whether or not they would lose volunteers, she didn't know if they would.
Yeah.
But I can see similar things like with the rec department, fishing derby, I'm sure there's volunteers involved there.
Yeah.
One off things, do we need to? And then from my point of view, we need to buy more filing cabinets, cause we're gonna we're gonna rack up the paperwork. And where do we wanna go with this?
Yeah.
It's it's just seems intrusive to me. Like making. Well, there are certain positions that absolutely require. Yeah, and there's no question. There's no question about that.
Hmm.
Uh and we just have to, you know, I think, like you said, where it says all employees and volunteers and et cetera, et cetera. Um I mean, elected officials? That's not required. Yeah, what's it here? It's not required, non-such- employees.
Hmm.
And this is for employees or?
Yeah, elected officials are required.
It's really strange, isn't it?
Elected officials are not required to have a background check.
Hmm.
Okay, see drills.
In those.
That's why the finance advisory committee needs to turn the budget, vote it in, doesn't it? There's a perk to it. If you call that a perk.
Yeah.
We had a background check, right, the finance?
Uh we didn't have this policy in place, so it's been at the pretty much at the discretion of.
Think you just signed the volunteer form with the kid.
Hasn't it just been at the discretion of each head of
Yeah.
whatever it is?
Yeah, and there hasn't been much guidance and it's been lost periodically and.
What do you mean lost?
Well, not the practice of it.
Hmm.
Yeah.
For some places that where it should be done.
Correct, yeah.
So then the question is, do we institute it for all places um because of that?
So is there a list of exclusions that you'd like to?
Well, I just gave a few examples and I mean, if we're gonna head into lawyer territory, then maybe we need to hire a lawyer and divvy up all the volunteer positions that are in this town, have the lawyer tell us, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no.
Oh.
With the instruction that we want to allow people to volunteer without having to submit to government intrusion into their life. Is that possible or have am I living in the olden days and I need to learn that we must know if you're gonna be here, is that? Well, certain volunteer things certainly require uh a background. Yeah, if you're dealing with kids, public money. Anything related to children, right, money, um I mean, the three of us are dealing with the town's budget.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, is that really uh dealing with money or is that, you know? True, yeah. Where do you draw the line? Mm-hmm. That's a good question. You can see, it really rubs me.
Has that kind of, see, you you could get overwhelmed really fast, cause I can argue why you should all have background checks.
Corruption. Yeah, but it's not the law.
History of corruption.
Yeah.
Right, so but but you could get overwhelmed where you're doing background tests on everybody and that's gonna cost a fortune and do cause a lot of delays. And they'll discourage some good volunteers from participating because they don't want a background check done, or they don't wanna share their their social security number. Uh what at what are neighboring towns doing that are?
Well, it's everybody, right down to the snack shack worker that wanna volunteer, yeah.
Some, I can guarantee you.
No, not not, it's not at all, but it's it's there, it's like it, they can go that far.
A lot. So which group are we dealing to? The towns that don't require.
Yeah. Well, it's all about reduction of liability for the different people in a different position, so I just.
Yeah, and but that road, you know the road that started reduction for liability. And it is filled with rules, regulations, paperwork. And that's what that road is filled with. And how far do we wanna go down that road? I understand we can't be foolish, but at the same time, what kind of town are we gonna be living in if we start trotting down that road? Well, you know, going back to where we were three minutes ago. And you know, you've got a starting point of anybody dealing with with children, especially for the rec center type type stuff, cause that's probably.
Hmm.
And especially unsupervised, without others. Right, so um and I think maybe to be the least intrusive is you uh go ahead and select a few others. And then you can adjust that list um once something happens. If something happens. Yeah, cause I'm not aware of, I mean, there's probably been a few events through the two hundred and seventy five years of this town. Mm-hmm. There probably has been. So, you know, but you um rather than just assuming that everybody's guilty from the very beginning. You assume that um you know, certain things are, you know, maybe we use some guidelines from other towns or, you know, other programs. And that and then adjust it as we go along. And this was taken, I assume. Alright, this was taken off of somebody else's probably, but.
Hmm, somewhat.
Hmm.
I usually don't like copy and paste other towns, I kinda go through it and maybe compare a few different towns and what their policies are.
Hmm. Yeah, I like that with the um RTK to have a couple of.
Yeah.
Yeah. Numbers. Yeah, I don't know, do you think it's a uh valid point or?
Alright. I don't see the problem with all getting all background checks, I I don't know. It doesn't seem that intrusive to me, it's kind of like an expectation that that would be done.
No, and we don't. And and you know, uh between us, but yeah, there are other people that maybe would or would uh but who knows if you really have those people working.
Yeah. Hmm.
Well, I think.
Cause even s- like my public, like social security numbers, I don't know, I just think it's the whole, it's a joke. I don't know, they used to write them on envelopes and send them to people, you know, from the base and, you know, like it just.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, back in the day, yeah.
I just, yeah, there's a social security number everywhere, I just, at this point, all my stuff's all over the internet, everything, most people's information's attainable if
I mean. Yeah.
We've all been subject to data breaches and I don't know, maybe it's just me just giving in to that aspect of the facade of any type of privacy at any point, anyone is.
Well, and what about the idea that um the heavy hand of government, do you you don't feel like it's a heavy hand of government is gonna be over? Things have changed over time, because like when I went into the military, um your social security number was your ID number. And it was printed on your dog tags, it was printed on your ID card.
Used to be printed on your driver's license.
And it used to be on the driver's license also, that's right, I forgot about that. You could opt out of it though, but now, have any of you had your social security number hacked?
So.
I have never had that.
I know someone who has and you may be in for a shock how much it will disrupt your life.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he had, and years later, he's got people applying for and almost getting loans under his name.
Hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. I don't know, so either a list of exclusions or a list of um departments and positions within the department that they're required for?
Yeah, I think exclusions would be the best.
Hmm, like.
I can call Primex, I just thought of that.
That's a good idea.
And see what the liability, what they require.
Yeah.
Or insurability.
Per minimal, minimal requirement, not not what?
Yeah. No.
Yeah, you know what I mean?
What, I mean, we have to cover ourselves liability wise, insurance wise, so what do they require? Like what state of volunteerism? I mean, all employees have to regardless, so that's not even the question, it's just any volunteers to me, right?
Right, yeah. Yeah, that would that would be really good, I wonder if they just pulled it up on their website, if they have some there.
Yeah, no, there is, there isn't a list.
Yeah, like why would the Patriot Committee need um a background check? Guess they might, I don't know, steal from Sean. Steal a flag, steal a flag? If this, these are, these are the kinds of things that I look at, like Yeah. Someone's willing to give hours and hours of time and then yeah, like them guys and then just the inconvenience of it, it's just another piece of red tape. You wanna do a good deed, here you go.
Well, you know what they say, no good deed goes unpunished.
Prove yourself.
Yeah.
So let's let's be the enforcers of that rule already. Anybody anybody actually handling cash money? Yeah, and certainly it is the kids or.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Hmm, interesting perspective, so we'll come back to that one.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Circle back next week.
No.
Why not?
Kick it?
Yeah, no, we'll go next week, we'll just keep it, keep hammering our way at them.
Okay.
Alright, the volunteer policy. Jason, you said Tina made some revisions on there?
Yeah, well, it was that number six.
Hmm.
And she thought, and this is just her opinion, that the heads of the Green Center should have background checks, but not the girls who come in for four hours and sort clothes.
Yeah.
That was her thought, so she just wondered if it should be all not for all volunteers. And then she.
We'll put those inclusions like on this too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then, uh, number nine, she thought that they don't want recognition or appreciation, cause they get satisfaction from what they do.
Yeah, I can't remember whose that was on, that was on some towns.
Yeah.
It's like, hmm. I mean.
And then when she, actually she didn't point that out, I did. I'm like, that sounds wooden.
Yeah. I'm not opposed to striking that part, I mean, if you wanna thank somebody, thank them.
Yeah.
It shouldn't be a requirement.
Although I.
Right.
My only other, my comments, number four. Um, promoting inclusivity and diversity should be gone, cause that's tied to Marxism. Unfortunately nowadays. Non-discrimination is fine. But DEI stuff, I'm not real keen on.
Well, I mean, we don't ever say no to anybody.
Yeah, I'm just saying them words are just political hot words right now. They're not needed. We will adhere to non-discrimination. Uh, principles, but, cause right now inclusivity means everyone accepts white people.
True.
And diversity means everyone accepts straight males. So, I'm just tired of that.
Yeah, so then you can't hire.
So just, yeah, that's all I'm asking.
Straight males and.
Just put a, make that comma period. And get rid of that loaded.
Well, it's kinda redundant, I guess, at the end of the sentence.
Yeah, I know. I mean, non-discrimination is non-discrimination, it doesn't matter what, what kind.
But them, but them words are constantly being thrown at us.
Yeah, I don't remember. Yeah. Yep.
And they've taken on a different meaning than what they used to mean.
Yep.
Hmm.
Yeah, so, the other, the only other one, comments.
Just, I just have to actually put that stuff in there, because, I mean. You know. That, that's all this stuff coming around from so many people complaining about anything that they can't.
We have a, we have a bit of that going on in our culture today though.
We do, yeah.
I just complained about this.
Okay, so I'm removing number nine and I'm striking.
These are just my thoughts, these guys haven't, haven't given their thoughts, they can disagree with me all they like.
The last sentence and number four. Okay.
Number five, I think that all information provided by applic- applicants instead of volunteers. Because we're gonna have all this information, whether they end up as a volunteer or not, right?
Okay.
Because it says the application shall include personal information, so this is.
Yeah.
More for, um, people who are department heads and whatever.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
On this one, that they're aware that it's not just for volunteers, it's for people who you rejected as well.
Yep. I can see that.
Oh, and then there was a spelling. Was it on this one? No, that was on the other one, huh?
And then, this has a back to it too.
No, it was, this was it. Yeah, that was the only comments I had.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm not sure what's wrong with number nine. You know, stating that town will recognize. And appreciate the contributions of volunteers through various means. Uh, some people have done things and had made specific requests to not be recognized. And then it's also nice to recognize people to help, you know, encourage and promote volunteerism as well.
But I feel like you should do that anyway, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be in a, a policy that says you have to do this.
And it's covered on number one.
Mm-hmm.
You know what I mean, like you should do it anyway. Like publicly thanking the F A C several times.
Yeah, it's not, it's not offensive to me, it, by no means, I just feel like.
You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
It was just a little.
Yeah, it's cumbersome to compel. That to ha- to compel that to happen.
What's happening?
Yeah.
That's what it kinda feels like.
Yeah.
You know, you know what happens when you tell me that we have to compel people.
Alright, I'm good with that. Yeah, all your, uh, changes seem, sound reasonable.
Okay.
So, we'll look for that, update, yeah.
Update.
And then, the.
Hang on, I just wanna, number six. Update to match background check. Right?
I think so, yeah. I mean, that could be the way that it.
Yeah.
Yeah, add inclusions from the background check policy.
Yep. Okay.
Do the RSA's have anything about background checks?
Don't know, never looked. I don't even know, but there is an RSA. None of the ones I saw said per RSA blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, I wonder, are they company, insurance companies maybe?
How do, how do we, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How do we look up on it tomorrow?
Okay.
Alright, and then the right to know. Policy. Where did you source this from?
Several different places, um, one of them was the, um, I can't remember what town it was. Most of it is pretty much stolen from there. From whatever town that was, um. Oh, I can't remember which one it was.
So you gave us a, um.
Another one, from Hennecker, it was, and I thought that one had a lot of good points in it.
One from Hennecker. But this doesn't look similar, yeah.
Yeah, so.
This doesn't really look similar to this one.
I don't.
It wa- it doesn't look similar, or?
Yeah.
No, it's different stuff and I think that.
Yeah, I, I liked this one, the Hennecker one.
Yeah, I did too.
Yeah.
Uh, the first reason I liked it better was you could read it quicker.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah, I know it's shorter. I mean, this is basically, this one here is RSA-driven. It's like all of the RSA's say.
And.
But I agree, I, I like the Hennecker one better.
The only thing, the only comments I had on it was, and it's probably the same as our, this, are these our, our rates, fifty cents per page?
This, that's all Hennecker, but yeah, uh, right now we have fifty cents a page.
Cause I. I wonder how, that seems expensive, but.
Um, for copies?
Yeah.
There's, uh, legislation. Right now to, um, that hopefully passes, like if you have to do research or you have to compile stuff or whatever. You, after a certain amount of hours, you can charge for that, for the time as well.
Well, I don't.
It was like something like twenty-five dollars an hour.
I, I don't remember what it was.
I don't know if I.
Rembursement.
I don't know if I like that legislation.
Why?
Because.
Do you know how much time we spend doing our ninety-one A request, gathering stuff?
Well, I know, but that comes in spurts, and I think.
It does come in spurts, but.
I think it's kinda similar to making everyone get a background check, it's like, I understand it, and I've seen the debate on. One of the news sources, right, if you call it that, um. And all of the debate has been, like, this is an outrage, they're trying to keep us from accessing or requesting and.
Not at all, feel free.
No, 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 but this is, this is how it's perceived.
No, yeah, but there's a certain element that focuses in on that portion of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, rather than, yeah, because. We're running. Basically about a bare bones operation here.
Yep.
And you take one or two people off of that to go do something, some research for somebody, which might take, you know, six hours.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, to, between looking it up, um, making sure you've got the right, uh, items and getting it printed out and, you know.
Yeah. Or it might be a combination of people.
Or having somebody sit, sit with somebody while they're going, doing a deep dive into some of the paperwork.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, and you're paying that person.
Mm-hmm.
And that, that's coming at the expense of the taxpayer.
Yeah. Yeah.
And that's not true.
For the right to know.
Right.
And so, that's where it gets to be in, like, that's just part of your job as a town government.
Right.
Is to be there to provide this information so that people can see, and so. Do you charge for it?
I mean, I do agree with that, I mean, everyone has the right, any public document, you absolutely have the right to do.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just sometimes you can't.
But we'll see.
It, it's not like at your fingertips, you have to compile stuff, or you have to, you know, go in the basement and day out files, or whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, and you don't have it at your fingertips, and plus you're trying to do your job, the rest of your job. I'm not saying that's, ninety-one A isn't part of your job, but.
Yeah.
I mean, some, like, I agree though too, it does come in spurts.
Yeah, and.
Mm-hmm.
And I remember reading about a town in New Hampshire. And the town kept track, it cost them forty thousand, forty thousand dollars to do a right to know.
One right to know?
And they, one right to know, and they gave the person all the information and that was the end of it.
Right.
So it can be used as a weapon against towns.
Right, so you can't get your stuff done that you need to get done.
Where that balance is, I don't know, and I don't know if the House is gonna vote that thing through.
Right.
Yeah.
And even if they do, then it has to go to the Senate.
Well, and I, I think maybe part of that too is to discourage the people who are just doing it to keep you busy.
Yeah.
They really don't have a goal in mind, because there are people out there. I mean, I haven't seen any, but like in, you know, there are people out there that just wanna have you spinning your wheels, spinning your wheels, spinning your wheels, just to keep you busy doing that stuff, so you're not doing.
Whatever their, whatever their motives are.
The rest of your job. Right, and then once they get the information, it's okay, see ya.
It is. Yeah.
You know, even, even those.
Just because they can.
Exactly, right.
And I would say their motives are, can be difficult.
Right. Yeah.
Whatever is behind that, it's what they want.
But I mean, if you have a legitimate goal in mind and whatever, like, I mean, it is what it is, whether it takes a lot of time or a little time, you know?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, I think, you know.
Yeah.
An option for that, especially when you're running a, you know, bare bones type of, uh, operation, is I think you brought it up, didn't you? Um. That you put a, a contract employee. Um.
Hmm.
On the side and they get called in to do that part of the work.
Yeah, I mean, but you'd have to budget for that. You know?
Agreed.
If you don't budget for it, then.
Right, but at least you're having somebody out of.
It's not something you can do.
That's a, that's, that's one approach.
Yeah.
However, that person would then have to go in and. Depending on who it was, they would have to go in and sit with them to get the information, so you might as well just use.
Right. Right.
Run it through the. Town administrator and have the information gathered.
Yeah.
But yeah, I don't know, fifty cents a page?
For the first ten pages.
And then it's lower after that.
Hmm.
And, I mean, they can take pictures with their phones.
Hmm.
We don't have to make copies.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Somebody brought in a scanner, and they can just run it through their scanner and save it as a PDF to their email. That's fine too. There's, there isn't always a cost, a lot of people don't want it printed out.
Hmm.
But sometimes we only have it in paper.
Yeah.
So, if we only have it in paper, huh?
Do you remember what our lease? Do you remember what our lease agreement is per paper?
Per page?
Per page for the printer?
I don't remember.
I remember seeing.
But it, and it's, but it's not just. The, this is how much we pay every time we make a copy, it's the, it's also the toner, it's also the person's time.
Right, 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 I understand.
And, you know, all of that stuff, the paper. You know?
Yeah.
Yeah, whatever, I don't know if that's.
Fifty cents is a standard across the board.
And then color.
Per copy.
Colored.
Color copies are more expensive, yeah.
A dollar.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
And the way I, the other way to look at this is, yeah, you have the right to do this and, and to demand it. But it's the people who are paying for the paper and the people who are paying for the ink.
Right, yeah.
And so.
And the person's time.
Yeah, so, I guess looking at it in that way.
Mm-hmm.
Like that we had said, don't have to take paper copies, you know, it can be scanned, emailed, yeah, and then there's no charge for that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Hmm.
Like pictures?
Yeah. So, I find with the printed, the printed, uh, fees myself.
But there's still the research time.
And agree that the Hennecker one is.
Much better.
Yeah, I don't, it's a little more simplistic feeling for some reason.
I like it better. Yeah, that's what I thought too.
And I, I like the verbiage of some of the points.
Yep.
Hmm.
Some of the points, they're easy to understand and I feel like they're very fair.
Mm-hmm.
Both to the person requesting and to the, um, clerks in town.
Yeah. Yep.
Uh, the only other one I questioned was see.
Hmm.
Would we provide thumb drives or?
So, there's a whole thing that, like, security wise, you can't have, so if we have a bunch of documents, somebody wants them. You can't have someone bring in their own thumb drive and put it in your computer.
Right.
Because it can have a virus and whatever and corrupt your computer. We can have thumb drives, or they can either bring in a purchased one still in the sealed package, then we can use that one, or, and this is from Primax. Um, or we can buy flash drives and they can buy them at cost from us, we're not gonna upcharge or anything, but if we pay ten bucks for it, they're gonna pay ten bucks for it. But if they, if they want it on a flash drive, it would have to be on as factory sealed one or something that we purchased. So, that's a security issue.
Are emails mentioned in here? That's right, just put a question mark, if we could just email or Dropbox instead of thumb drives and not use thumb drives.
Well, you don't have to, it's just a.
Yeah.
If there's a ton of, you know, stuff that it's too big for an email, and then you're sitting there dragging and dropping, you know, to five different emails, cause the files are so large. You know, it's just as easy to drag and drop the whole thing right onto a thumb drive and call it a day.
Which goes to circle back to an old conversation that we had about. Uh, we've got a lot of old documents on paper and getting them scanned.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I did get the quote from, um. The company that I had come in and to scan all the documents, all the old birth certificate stuff and, um, and I also, also had him, we kinda looked through that cemetery drawer with all those old maps. That are on pieces of cardboard and taped together and, um, but I haven't had a chance to open the quote and look at it, so, he did give me a quote for all of it.
Alright.
So.
Excellent.
Write that down.
So, and there's a couple of spelling errors on this, just run it through, yeah, it's, yeah, spell check and so.
On the Hennecker one? So, are, are there any changes you wanna make on the Hennecker one? And I'll just put it on our letterhead and call it a day.
Where were the, um, spelling?
Uh, number two. Under procedure. So, so we cannot, so that we can and. Can, can own. The second, second sentence.
Oh, we can and.
Yeah. And then.
So it should be we cannot?
Yeah, on the back. Uh, see, electronic media.
Electronic media.
Hmm.
I missed some ones, I did get the, uh, statue though.
Yeah.
Please know that the statue provides the following.
Yeah, I remember that one.
I don't know, is that steak or statue?
Right.[1734.21] Yeah, statue.
Statue, yeah.
Statue.
Should be statue.
Okay. But everything else, the verbiage and everything is alright, other than a couple of spelling errors?
Yeah.
Okay.
Come back to that one too.
So, uh, looking direction, RSA forty-one nine, um, it's detailed in the New Hampshire Municipal Association's write-up. Uh, that's the RSA for background checks.
What is it, forty-one nine?
Yeah, forty-one colon nine, paragraph B. And they define it as, uh, the employee works with or around children or elderly persons, enter the homes of citizens or collect or manage money. And that's defined in a municipal association, but then there's a clause that says there may be more, so it says, uh, uh, contact your, it's a good idea to contact your town's insurance carrier for the guidance, so.
It sounds exactly like
Thank you, sir.
what the town has kind of been running off of.
Yeah.
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 Although the elderly, I don't know if we've, we don't really have anyone that deals specifically with elderly.
Sure. But if we were to write a process, I would probably take that municipal association quote and put it right in that same process and say it's.
Yeah, I agree.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. Alright, and then the last one was the application to appointment, but we already went that, so that was the first one actually. Alright, so we good? Oh no, we're all in T F laws.
Really, must've.
Oh, we did do it, we did do that, I know, I'm like, I wrote it down.
Did I lose it?
I'm losing it, I told you, it's broken out.
Alright.
Okay.
So, Joe, we got through all of our agenda business, what brings you before us this evening or you just?
Uh, just a two-minute update, uh, the court got back to us, uh, with that preliminary hearing back in January. Uh, they, you know, he had asked for, um, a no trespassing injunction against us. Uh, we pretty much said, you know, can we maintain the dam, can we, you know, a- ask him to back off? The court came back and said, uh, that they're not gonna issue an injunction to either one of us, we kind of expected that. Uh, but it clearly states that they're, they're allowing us to fix any erosion, uh, on the dam, uh, at both the dam areas as well as the impacted section of property. So, that was a really good statement from them saying, okay, so, um, you know, we, we're allowed to, you know, put our material there, do our, our erosion mitigation plans, including where he's gonna be traveling now, so that, that was good. Um, at, the next step is, I mean, there's a whole bunch of legal steps with depositions and, and experts and, uh, but they're, but our lawyer is working with his lawyer to schedule court date and they're thinking somewhere on December fifteenth.
Oh, that fast?
That was the thought, it's like, are you kidding me?
Wow.
Wow.
So, yeah, so it's, it's out there, uh, but I, I do have copies of the court order, if you're just in reading it, um, it, it's a lot of words, but basically it just says, you know, no, no decisions have been made, but, um, the court allows us to, to do our maintenance and use that property and correct the erosion that's done as a result of that in place, so that was good.
Yeah, can you, so, do you have that over email that you could send to Debbie or everyone again?
Yeah, uh, give me hard copy right now or I can, uh, I can email it as well.
Yeah, cool. Yeah.
Cool, thanks.
It's an interesting read, but, um.
Thank you.
I, I guess there, there's one statement in there that was really good to see, um, it's on, it's on page five, and that pretty much summarizes about the whole, the whole write-up. I can't get there, here we go.
Hmm, hmm, thank you for the update.
I can't find the word actually. Oh, here we go, on the bottom of page five, it says, given the court has denied the plaintiff's request for preliminary injunction of relief, the court finds that this order sufficiently protects the public interest by allowing the defendant to continue, uh, any erosion mitigation efforts in this huge area in order in the plaintiff's intervention with those efforts.
Thanks, okay. Cool.
And the zoning board is, uh, is meeting on the seventh, March seventh, to discuss the.
Yep.
Yeah.
For the, um, stop work order.
Uh, to revisit the, consider, yeah, the stop work order decision.
Okay. Appeal of administrative decision, there we go.
So I don't have an ask at this point, I still, I think we're, we're good, we're moving forward and all's good, so.
Okay.
Hmm, yeah, please, keep a copy with the file, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you wanna email it to me.
I'll do that, yeah.
That way I can just send it instead of having to scan it.
Yeah.
Debbie, do you have anything else for us?
Um, yeah, I had a few things, um. I, um, after our conversation last week, I got a phone for myself for here. Got the phone for free and it's cheaper than the reimbursement that, um, I was getting, so. Um, so I'm gonna take all my work stuff off of my personal phone and it's all gonna be on a work phone, so I texted you guys today.
Good. That'll help you on vacation, cause you can leave that one at home.
Thing, well, you know.
Maybe.
I know, yeah, I know, I'll sneak it in my, I know, um.
Maybe not.
I could have Sean denied that request.
I know, weekends, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, just so I'm not on twenty-four seven, um, anyways, so that was that.
No, it's good, it's good.
Um, Brownfield, I got an email which I forwarded to you guys right before the meeting. Um, they are going to begin its phase two environmental site assessment for both lots and the, um, the final executed scope is on, in, attached to that. They will be, um, they think they're gonna be start drilling around the beginning of Octo- uh, October, yeah, see? Mm-hmm, I'm good, um, around the beginning of April and they'll follow up ahead of the fieldwork, so, there's that. And then, um, Sean had mentioned, um, about the new accounting software. So, I made a few phone calls, cause everyone's struggling with it. And, I mean, part of it's training, but part of it is, um, you know, once you get, you get the initial training to learn just what you need to do, but then as you're using it, you know, you, you find all these things that either you don't know how to do or weren't set up right or whatever. So, I finally heard back from them and they are going to, it was four thousand dollars for four days for remote training, or about twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars for three days to have them come out. So I said, okay, well, forget about having them come out, and because of, like, a few of the mix-ups on the implementation and everything and I had asked to have the whole thing billed in twenty-twenty-three and they forgot to bill us for four days of training, so we still had four days of training left, and it's a thousand dollars a day, so they said they would give us a fifty percent discount. So they're gonna charge us two thousand dollars for four days of remote training and working out all the bugs. So I got specific dates from Carleen and Nancy and Mindy and myself, and I asked them to make lists so they can be prepared for their day that they're gonna have, like, what do you exactly is messing up or confusing you or, you know, what do you need to know how to do, whatever it is, so you're prepared to ask them questions and, you know, get the answers that you need. So, um, I'm doing the fourth and Carleen and Nancy are doing the fifth, Mindy's doing the sixth, and then we still have one more day if we need it.
Hmm, excellent.
So, it'll be, you know, so we're each getting a full day of, you know, here's the bugs, help me fix, help me figure it out, you know? So, um, so that should be good and helpful and straighten things out.
Well, in accounting, are we at a point now where we could have, like, monthly, um, balances?
Yeah, you can actually go in and.
Just get it at any time.
Run the report yourself. That was, that was kind of part of the thing too, like, you can go in, the department heads and you guys can just go in and run it whenever you want it.
But there's.
So, when do we get our training?
By good luck, yeah, I'm still trying to figure out how to run that report, to get the monthly, yeah.
Cause, cause I would like, uh, to me, it would be a really nice thing, first of the month, we have.
That's right.
How last month was.
Right.
And, so that way there when we're talking with our, um, different departments that we work with, we can have that with us and be like,
Yeah. Right.
Well, we better be careful about this or.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, the, the first of the month, mom, yeah, I guess.
I mean, s- you know, sometime at the beginning of the month.
Yeah. Right, yeah, I'm just thinking, cause like when she's paying bills and it goes in, it gets, you know, like the, the invoice was in February, but it's being paid in.